Not seen the level of harassment and intimidation that we've seen in previous efforts. We don't see them protesting this press conference today.
Changing into a charter school means many current teachers could be let go, but so far, no challenges from the teachers' union. 24th Street could be operating as a charter as early as September. In the West Adams District, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The LA School Board voted unanimously to uphold the parents' request for charter school status. We reported last week on the city's first so-called parklet in Highland Park, and one week later, the first downtown parklets, two of them, have also been officially unveiled. As Cindy San Luis reports, these projects are meant to make Los Angeles more pedestrian-friendly and to help create a sense of community.
Three, two, one. Downtown's first public parklets have sprung up on Sixth and Spring Streets in the historic core.
It builds community, and it makes streets safer, and it helps local businesses.
Parklets are temporary extensions of the sidewalk and provide seating and recreational space that is open to anyone who chooses to sit, relax, or socialize.
I think this is great, you know, I mean, I think a lot, you know, downtown LA has become more of a walking community, and it encourages people just to come out and be out and about.
The openings are part of a council District 14 Pilot Parklet Program through the LA Department of Transportation, also known as LADOT. The first one opened earlier in the month in Highland Park, the last of the four in El Serino.
There must have been a foosball fan in the neighborhood to want to have a foosball table here.
I just threw it out there as an idea. They wanted to be an active parklet, so I was thinking, I like foosball, have a foosball. And it just stayed in the plans.
For the Spring Street Parklets, the Downtown LA Neighborhood Council Complete Streets Working Group created concepts and designs with the support of Council District 14 and LADOT. Parklets are often called outdoor living rooms or mini plazas, and have been fully embraced in other major cities like San Francisco and New York City. But this one here in downtown LA on Spring Street isn't just for lounging.
This is the first parklet in the nation that is an active recreation parklet, that invites people not only to sit and to have a good time, but also to exercise and to be healthy.
Parklets like this continue to revolutionize and revitalize downtown Los Angeles and the city of LA, transforming a city that is known for its traffic into something more pedestrian-friendly. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
From parks the size of a parking space to parks that are a little bit bigger. We go to South Los Angeles where one so-called pocket park is in the works. This one, the Wall Street Park, is part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, and as Anna Marcos shows us, it's bringing mother earth back where urban decay used to exist.
Here's what a blighted house going down looks like.
Tear it down, tear it down.
The foreclosed home had been a neighborhood eyesore. There were even bullet holes on the walls, but now the blight is about to go green. It's all part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, a plan to turn nuisance properties and empty urban lots into pocket parks in the city's most urban neighborhoods.
This house has been hurting the neighborhood for some time now. It's been empty, it's been broken down, it hasn't helped this neighborhood, it's making things worse, not better, and we're gonna make things better, not worse.
Students from South Park Elementary who came to watch the demolition couldn't be happier.
I wanna see the swings at, I like those swings. I just play on the equipment.
What can I say? It'll be nice for the kids, especially for the kids, they have somewhere to go.
So far, the city has opened seven new pocket parks under the 50 Parks Initiative, with an eighth one coming soon, and several more, like this future park, on the way.
We are designing this around the environment. We're designing it about energy conservation, we're designing it around groundwater retention, we're designing it using local plants. So when you come here, not only is it a park, it's really ecologically, it's part of your community.
A little concrete hacking, and this neighborhood eyesore is about to grow into something healthy for the community. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A museum here in the city receives a half a century-long lease agreement. Could there be another half-cent sales tax on the horizon? And a local community celebrates the renovation and reopening of a much-needed grocery store. These stories and more in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council has unanimously approved a long-term pact with the Chinese-American Museum, located at El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historic Monument. The agreement clears the way for the Chinese-American Museum to operate for the next 50 years at the city site. Councilman Jose Wezar, who represents the district that encompasses El Pueblo, called the Chinese-American Museum "an important part of El Pueblo's storied history." There are plans in the works to add 12,000 square feet of new space for exhibits and programs. Mayor Antonio Viegas is endorsing a half-cent sales tax measure on the March ballot. Proposition A is expected to generate more than $200 million a year. A report by the city administrative officer who supports the measure predicted as many as 500 police officer jobs could be on the chopping block if Proposition A is defeated, and that the city's projected deficit of about $216 million could rise to $360 million. But opponents contend the tax would be bad for local businesses and hurt cash-strapped residents. More than $4 million in grant funding remains available for would-be homebuyers, thanks to a year-old program created as part of a settlement between the Justice Department and banks. So far, about 180 LA County applicants have each been awarded $30,000 grants for down payments. Superior Grocers, one of Southern California's largest independent supermarket chains, celebrated the re-grand opening of its newly renovated store in Council District 9. In conjunction, there was also a special celebration to recognize the first community mural project, completed in collaboration with Council District 9, the accelerated school and mural artist Andre Meripolsky. The Fruits and Veggies mural was developed by the team to help promote health and wellness efforts and to beautify the surrounding community. The mural was completed with the help of our students from Wallace-Annenburg High School. The Superior Grocers store is located at 7316 South Compton Avenue. It's a farmer's market that caters to the professional crowd downtown, and after a temporary relocation, it's being returned to its former high-profile location. Many City Hall workers and others who work in the surrounding area frequent the City Hall Farmers Market, held every Thursday at lunchtime.
It's very convenient for the ones at lunchtime. It's only about a two-and-a-half-hour market during lunch, and it gets very, very busy.
The Farmers Market, originally located on the City Hall main lawn on First Street, was relocated to a less visible part outside of City Hall after the main lawn was taken over by Occupy LA protesters who set up encampments on the lawn. The city council recently approved extending the City Hall Farmers Market at least to the end of June.
Now that that lawn has been fully restored, beautifully restored, after the conclusion of the protests, the vote today will enable the Farmers Market to return to the City Hall lawn, where it belongs.
But the vote comes with one caveat: organizers will have to reimburse the city for cleaning services provided after each Farmers Market. That's a small price to pay for doing business. In fact, some say it's too small a price.
This is a business, Mr. President, and those vendors are making good money. I don't see why we can't charge a little extra, because in the end, it's usually the city that ends up on the short end of that stick. So I hope that we get a little more than just reimbursement for cleanup costs.
Despite the concern, the council took no time approving the extension of the popular Farmers Market.
It's really important that the city do everything that we can to encourage Farmers Markets throughout our city. These are wonderful sources of fresh produce for the residents of Los Angeles.
And those who work downtown say they're grateful for this unique lunchtime treat.
I work nearby, and for working people, having a market to go to during the week is special. Otherwise, you don't have access to something like this during the work week and can only shop on the weekends.
Again, the City Hall Farmers Market is held at lunchtime on Thursdays. A new restaurant in Lake Balboa in the San Fernando Valley is also offering up some healthy fare while also being environmentally friendly. As Gil Reyes reports, the Humblebee Bakery is cooking up ways to be green and to reinvest in the local economy.
Less than a year after its grand opening, Humblebee Bakery and Cafe has received mostly rave reviews on social networking sites like Yelp. Customers say...
It's amazing, and fresh, and organic, and so inventive.
I like that we're supporting our community.
We just love coming here every weekend.
Whether you ordered the Eggs Benedict or the Garden Omelet, co-owner Jim Bonano says all his produce is bought farm-fresh locally, in places like the Encino Farmers Market. This helps to ensure most of his money is reinvested in our region. He also takes pride in being environmentally conscious.
All of our plastic packaging is corn-based, so that's all biodegradable. All of our paper packaging is also compostable, biodegradable. So pretty much everything we're using here, we're about 90%, organic right now.
To further help the environment and reduce energy costs, this family-owned business uses compact fluorescent lights throughout the restaurant. Also...
All of our dishes are hand-washed and tub-sink, so we're not constantly running a dishwasher all day.
All that has earned them an award certificate from the city of Los Angeles.
To have new restaurants open, particularly in this environment, in this economic climate, we encourage people to come by, and we want to make sure they stay in business, not just because they're a great local restaurant, but they have great pastries and fresh breads.
The Humblebee Bakery and Cafe is located at 17321 Saticoy Street. It's open Wednesday through Sunday for breakfast and lunch. In Lake Balboa, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The restaurant also benefits from the Business Tax Holiday, which waives the gross receipts tax for new businesses during their first three years. In this week's List of Things to Do, a stroll in the mountains, stepping at the Music Center, and activities for the whole family on the last weekend of the month. Take a free bus trip to the mountains on Saturday, February 23rd, for a visit to Solstice Canyon in Malibu. Walk next to a babbling brook, wander under towering alders and sycamore trees, and explore the park's many trails. A haven from city life, Solstice Canyon is the perfect spot to enjoy the beauty and serenity of nature. Meet at the Vista Hermosa Natural Park Office, located at 100 North Toluca Street downtown. The event is sponsored by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and presented by the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Call 213-250-1100 for more information. It's a little like tap dancing, but then, it's also nothing like it. If you've never experienced stepping, it's best described as a percussive dance that uses kicks, stomps, claps, and chants to create visually and musically exciting rhythms. And you have a chance to enjoy stepping on the Music Center stage on Saturday, February 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., when the world's first professional dance company devoted to stepping, Step Africa, puts on a show that draws from roots in African dance and military marching. The Music Center is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. For more info, go to musiccenter.org. And if ever you're wondering what to do with the kids on a Saturday or Sunday, just remember, if it's the last weekend of the month, you can always bring the family to Skirball Cultural Center's Last Weekends of the Month events. For the month of February, the last weekend of the month falls on Saturday and Sunday, the 23rd and 24th. In celebration of President's Day, February's last weekend will feature a presidential art project at Skirball's Family Art Studio, and a chance to visit with our first president, George Washington, who will regale families with tales from his days as cherry tree chopper in chief. The events are included with museum admission. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Love was definitely in the air at LA Animal Shelters this past Valentine's Day. A special adoption event in honor of love brought animal lovers and cuddly creatures together. Here's Anna Marcos with more on My Furry Valentine.
You're watching someone falling in love, make that two people falling in love with a furry friend. That was the idea as animal shelters all over LA launched My Furry Valentine, a pet adoption drive aimed at encouraging some canine-human love connections for Valentine's Day. This lady caught the love bug.
Do you think they're gonna be Twiggy or Molly? I'm not sure yet. She's a sweetheart.
And there were sweethearts everywhere, looking for someone to love. The My Furry Valentine Drive offered big discounts to new pet owners and lovers, whether the sweetheart they took home was canine, feline, or something else.
Here at the shelter, they neuter him, they put a microchip on it, I just had to pay for a few vaccinations. I didn't have to do anything but just to give him love and give him food, that's it, and take him for walks.
Love definitely in the air at this pet matchmaking extravaganza. But shelter workers remind LA residents that every day is a day to adopt one of these little guys and make a love connection. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on pet adoptions, visit laanimalservices.com. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. If you or your family has recently suffered a loss of income, you may now qualify for the Department of Water and Power's Residential Low Income Discount Program. The LADWP offers customers within qualifying income levels a subsidy on the cost of electric and water services for their primary residents. In addition, income-qualified senior citizens and disabled customers may be eligible for a discounted lifeline rate. Customers on life support equipment and those who meet the physician's certified requirements may also apply for a discounted rate. To find out if you qualify for any of these discounts and to receive a low-income discount application, please visit our website at www.ladwp.com.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silverlake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.[1049.33]
Sargent, I need two additional members to report to the council chamber. Good morning. It is Tuesday, February 19th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Hall and your Los Angeles City Council meeting. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. and the public is welcome. You can come to speak if you'd like and there's speaker cards in the back that you can fill out, or you can just come to watch your city council work. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alacon Buscano, Englander Garcetti, Wezar, Corretz, Corin, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Corretz, second. Next?
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Reyes moves. Zine, seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Could I ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise for our flag salute, which will be led by Mr. Corretz?
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, it might be a good idea if we ran through today's agenda.
Item one is a lien notice for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety requests that this item be continued to March 5th.
Okay, without objection.
Items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held.
Special, Mr. Reyes.
Three, please.
Item three for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange?
Item number two, please.
Two for Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks?
Four.
Four for Mr. Parks. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's a request to continue item four to March 5th and continue item five to February 26th.
Okay, Mr. Parks, did you hear that? Are you good? Okay, without objection. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let's move on.
Items 10 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Those items are now before this body. Do we have any cards?
Cards on item 18.
Then let's hold that. Members, Mr. Buscano?
Nineteen, please, and we'll be circulating an amending motion on nineteen.
Okay, so we'll hold that for the amending motion. And I thought I heard somebody say item four. We're continuing item four until March 5th. Mr. Reyes?
Item fifteen, please.
Item fifteen for Mr. Reyes. Members, any other? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And for item ten, the ordinance, that will be held up for one week unless we consider it for twelve members.
Okay, I understand. Okay, what's next?
On the supplemental agenda, item twenty is an item notice for public hearing. There are cards.
There are cards, okay. So we'll hold that as well. And that brings us where?
To items called special.
Anyway, members, if you look in the front rows of the chamber, and I guess a few rows behind it, you will see we have representatives from the McDonald's Corporation. McDonald's has over 115 restaurants in Los Angeles. They employ 6,400 people in the county of L.A. In doing that, they created indirect jobs at almost 17,000. They pay wages of over 71 million here. McDonald's is the largest retailer of salads in the United States. McDonald's is the biggest buyer of apples in the United States. McDonald's has tripled the consumption of oatmeal in the United States when it introduced its fruit and maple oatmeal. Forty-three cents on every dollar earned is returned to the local community. And there are six Ronald McDonald House charities in and around the L.A. area. They're here today to promote their healthy line of foods. And I will admit that I am a regular where it relates to oatmeal. And I do eat your apples from time to time, and the salads are not bad as well. We have owners and operators of the McDonald's restaurants here with us today. And for those of you in City Hall, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, in our rotunda, they will be providing smoothies and frappuccinos to all comers. So could we, can I ask all of the representative from McDonald's to please rise? Let people take a good look at you? Okay, Veronica, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I want you to quickly, why don't we select one person to say something from McDonald's? Now, I have a preference. I'm looking at her. She's trying to avoid, she's trying to avoid, Lois? Come on, don't be shy. Good morning and welcome.
Thank you. I was told when I came in that you, what's going on? What are you here for to celebrate? I said, we came here to celebrate you guys. Let me first thank you for your service. You know, we complain and talk a lot, but we never get the opportunity to say thank you. So thank you, all of you. McDonald's, I've been with McDonald's 30 years. I own four restaurants here in Los Angeles. I'm one of 14 children. I never thought I'd have this opportunity, but I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I have a sister that has eight McDonald's. I know Mr. Parks. Hello, Mr. Parks, how are you? And his beautiful wife, how is she? Thank you. You know, we come here to say to the public and to you guys that we have a healthy environment for young people, old people, to come in and have something to eat. I would love for any one of you to be invited into one of my restaurants, come into my refrigerator and my freezer, and see what we serve. I had the opportunity to have some nurses come in. They were amazed. We crack your eggs when we cook them. They're fresh. Our shelf life is probably shorter than the average shelf life on good product food in one's own home. And I take it very personal when I know that I would feed my grandchildren, my mom, my parents, in my restaurant. So I want people to know that the myth about what McDonald's is all about is not true. We serve good, fresh food. Ninety-eight percent fat-free beef, fresh eggs, fresh Canadian bacon, salads, fresh milk. And believe me, it's never in that store long enough to have any effect that's not positive for what we serve every day. So it's important to me that I say, don't look at the myth that goes about talking about McDonald's. McDonald's is probably one of the most prominent, most health-conscious restaurants that I can eat in. I know people talk about sit-down restaurants. If you look at our menu and look at our calorie count, and look at the calorie count of these big, large restaurants, sit-down, 1,200 calories in there, 400 calories for us. I eat at McDonald's every day. And I wear size eight. And I don't, you know, I'm conscious of what I eat, as everyone should be. Everyone should pick and choose what you eat. You have a choice. And we offer you those choices. So I say, don't hold back on us. Don't do not give us an opportunity. Not to mention what we do for the young people. We teach them job ethics. We truly do reach out to our youth. We help them to go to school. We make contributions to the local schools in our neighborhoods. We don't just take sales in your neighborhood and walk away. We give back tremendously. I can never tell you what a Ronald House is like. I've sat on the board of directors there. I've seen the parents that came there that could not afford to go anywhere. I have gone in my own pocket and paid for hotel rooms for parents to have somewhere to stay. So McDonald's is more than just a restaurant. It's a brand. It's a brand. It's an all-American brand. And I want everyone to recognize that because we've given back greatly. We have more minorities owning McDonald's restaurants than any other fast industry in this country. And we cannot take that opportunity away from them. We also set an image for our young people. Because most of us didn't come with a golden spoon in our mouths. We had to earn it. And we had to learn how to come out and run million-dollar businesses and give back. We're not the large corporation. We're individual business owners. We don't make what everybody thinks we make. If we can get a seven percent bottom line return, we're lucky. A lot of it is in your taxes. And I'm the first one to say I'll pay my fair share. I think I should. I think I should pay my fair share. And I'm, that's how I feel. I may not be speaking for everyone, but I speak for myself. You'll never get me to back off of the taxes. To vote for additional taxes early, I paid those too. So, guys, thank you for all that you do. And I hope you recognize what McDonald's means to our communities. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And, thank you. And, wait, wait, one second. Calm down. I'm gonna get to you. I was with Veronica, and we went to a rededication or reopening of one of the stores on La Brea and Rodeo. And they prepared the best chicken salad that I can remember. I, every time, I've told myself, whenever I run into owners and operators, I would urge you to make that a staple on the menu. It was that good. Now, I have several members that want to say a few things. And Mr. Labange is the first person on the queue. So, Mr. Labange, if you would.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And to all of you, thank you for being in the community of what you do. And when you talked about job training, which is so important, all of us need that at some point of our life and given that opportunity. And the evolution of your healthy food menu, which is so important. And, Mr. President, years ago in Orange County, it could have been in Los Angeles, but there was a rash of needles in parks and playgrounds. And just about that time, McDonald's created playplaces where mothers and fathers and children knew there was safe places to play. And the sidewalks next to your shops are clean, and the gutters next to your shops are clean, which always makes me know that you care. So I wanted to thank you. But I especially wanted to thank Carol Massey, because Carol Massey did something not too many business people do. She saw a need. When I came to her and said that McDonald's, you want to build on Hollywood right next to the freeway? We need a fire station there. And she, she put her hand up and said, okay. I'll get it. She had that property right there next to the Hollywood freeway. And we were able to build a fire station there. And she don't remain, remember, Carol, but you were right in the position to build your fourth McDonald's in Hollywood. Carol Massey, congratulations for your work in the community and also as a McDonald's franchisee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. I see a former member of the LAPD there, Mr. Bailey. Former member, we were partners in the LAPD. He's gone on to bigger and better things while I stay in politics, and my Harley riding buddy over here. But I want to say, I've been through the McDonald's kitchens, and I've seen the fresh food. I've seen the eggs. I've seen all the preparation. I had an opportunity to meet with many of the owners, go through. And when you go into the interior and you see how everything is so professionally done, so sanitized, and then they get the bad rap about this and that and the other, when people are on the run and they need to eat quick, and obviously nutrition's important, and they want to get a good nutritious meal, you go to McDonald's. It's a fast food, but the fact is, it's quality food. And when you want to look at modification, you folks will come into salads and the wraps and, you know, you want, you want the chicken. Okay, I want the chicken grilled, or I want it fried. You know, if you want it fried, get it fried. If you want it grilled, get it grilled. You want the lettuce wrap? Whatever you want. I mean, you have modified your menu at the changing times. Now, years ago, people be smoking here in city council. We've changed times. We don't smoke in public anymore. We've changed our habits, our behavior. We wear seat belts in cars. McDonald's has changed with the changing attitude of the public. Get healthy food. Get fresh food. I don't think anyone's ever said McDonald's is not fresh food. But if you want to get the Big Mac, which I love, and the fries and the chocolate shake and the lettuce, and that's good. Maybe it'll not be good for you, but it's good. But if you want to eat healthy, it's there. If you want to get the Egg McMuffin, and I'm a frequent visitor, but on the run all the time, I'm driving through that. And now the drive-ins, they got, they got two lanes because of the volume. But you're employing people, you're getting things done. And I'm happy to say that in my district, we're opening one in a week or so at Reseda and Victory Boulevard. Stephen Ho, who's got one on Ventura and White Oak, next Uncle Bernie's, which is another great place. But these are quality foods, quality foods for the people, and they have that option. So to all the owners, and McDonald's reaches out. Talking about a corporation that reaches out to people who want to make them, get, Bill Rosendahl's gonna have a seat in a few minutes. He wants a Big Mac. Well, you're gonna get a salad, I think, Bill. I think you're gonna get a salad today. But I saw the trucks unloading all the food, and I know there's, there's gonna be, because we don't come to council without feeding us, right? And it's a great opportunity to give recognition to all of the owners. And if you look at the owners, the owners are a reflection of this society, a reflection of this city. And they have reached out. The corporation has reached out. And Ronald McDonald House and all the good that they do. We had an opening recently at Reseda Park where the L.A. 84 Dodgers Foundation renovated and built a baseball field for the youth in that community. Now, who brought the food? Who donated the food? McDonald's donated the food for all the people that were there for that event. So anytime we reach out to McDonald's, they're there for us. So I want to publicly acknowledge, I'm a frequent fan, I'm a frequent visitor. And Don and I, when we were riding motorcycles way back when, we'd go to McDonald's. Now you own half of them in Los Angeles. But it's a great benefit when you can help people. And what you have done is help other people in this great community. So I have nothing but praise and admiration for all the McDonald's, the corporation, and all of you franchise folks, because I know what it takes to become a franchise owner. It's not easy. Just to walk in and say, here's a few dollars, I want to take over a restaurant. It's a cumbersome, difficult, challenging task. You've reached that success. So congratulations to all of you, and welcome to L.A. City Hall. It's a pleasure and honor to have you here today. Thank you ever very much.
Ms. Perry?
Welcome to all of you. And, Mr. President, it is always a pleasure to see you. You carry yourself well. And to thank all of you for working with us and your capable representative here, Veronica Perez, and the move forward on making sure that we're bringing healthy fresh food alternatives into areas that have been left behind. I'm very appreciative of your willingness to work with us and to grow and evolve with us. And just as an aside, you know, the last 12 years, I have sponsored the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, and McDonald's has always been there. And I can't tell you, the most popular giveaway was these fresh fruit smoothies. People were lined up for hours. So, you know, just as a tip, if you want to, you know, drive your marketing in that direction, that's definitely the place to go. Other than the rotunda today, too? Good, very good. All right. I can testify to that firsthand. So thank you again for working with us in South Los Angeles.
Okay, again, in the rotunda, we'll have smoothies and frappuccinos, correct? Okay. I would like to turn the mic over to Mr. Rosendahl, and then, Mr. Reyes, I'll come to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. When Jan Perry gets up and says, fresh and easy and making it healthy, you know you've got something going in the right direction. We have a McDonald's that we're looking at in Westchester. Many of you know about it. And Maxine Waters and I went there. And, you know, all healthy foods are critical to all of us. And so when McDonald's moves in that direction, you're truly on the cutting edge of the future. What I love the most about McDonald's is it's owned by community people who take a deep interest in their local areas there. They're part of the community. What we're experiencing in Westchester is a real give back, a real community involvement, a real sense of sensibilities. So we're gonna eat McDonald's, we're gonna have the salads, we're gonna have the smoothies, and we're gonna have all the healthy elements, and occasionally maybe a double Big Mac. I must admit, there is some joy in that, as long as we can keep them absolutely healthy and moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, McDonald's, for bringing people together and making it all work. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I've been chairing planning and land use for almost 12 years now. And when I see the new projects come forward for McDonald's, it's always done with a sense of purpose, not only for the business, but for the community. Your landscaping, how the traffic comes in and out, the spillover effect, all that's taken into account. And for that, I thank you, especially in the areas that tend to be forgotten, where you have such high densities, but very few options for healthy foods. One gentleman in particular, Frank Sanchez, I'm not sure if he's here today, but Frank owns several stores. And what impresses me about him, and I'm sure he is a example of what many of you all do, his focus on education, and how he uses his resources to leverage others that are in a position to support education in the city, especially in the parts of the city that do not have the type of infrastructure that speaks to... that do not have the type of infrastructure that speaks to facilities that could make it much better for us to get through this miserable rate we have, where almost 56% of the kids, only about 56 of graduating. So we have a humana, a, a humongous dropout rate. So looking at what you do, Frank is an example, in helping out the Catholic schools, their private schools, and if people say private, means money not always. Many of these schools are, are on a shoestring budget, uh, they need support, and I see him out there raising money every year for these schools. So I'm sure all of you have your stories and how you give, and I wanna thank you for that personal side of your philanthropic efforts. So again, congratulations, and I'm glad we could celebrate the health society, the healthy side of the menus, and I'm sure folks are gonna open their eyes and say, "Wow, that really is available? They should come and try." Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and again, I wanna welcome each and every one of you, and when I look at, at you today, the diversity of your owner-operators is to be commended, and I also thank you for being a leader in recognizing that people need to have a choice, and you offer them that opportunity, and that's phenomenal, even though I, I have to guess, somebody snuck me in a cheeseburger. Where's Veronica? I know somebody, Michael, you're gonna be in trouble if there's not a burger for me. But anyway, congratulations, give yourselves a round of applause. You deserve it. Give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you for everything that you do. And it's my understanding, it may take a moment before the, uh, the service begins, so just kinda hang around a bit, and I'm pretty sure we'll have the setup in the rotunda or in the back shortly. Okay, with that said, Mr. Reyes, um, I know your, your buddy just walked in, who I, who I consider my buddy as well, but, uh, did you wanna take up item 15 first, or did you wanna go chat with him?
Let's do item 15.
Okay, we'll do item 15. Madam Clerk, I've got two cards on that. That would be John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, and Dalhouse Dude. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Dude.
Antonio for Pope, come to our website, see him in full Pope regalia. Thank you. This is item 15. It's more, it's deny the request for a permanent, for permit to remove 69 various species trees for street scape improvement. This, again, we are not against everything you do here. This is a very good motion. This will save trees that produce oxygen. We don't believe in cutting down trees for some spaceship to go through, and remember, it didn't go through the West Side white community, it went through your community out there, not a white community, and you allowed it. But here, you've shown some spine, and you're going to save trees. Is this in a white neighborhood? I can't believe them saving trees in a minority neighborhood? HollywoodHighlands.org.
I believe that we do need to save the trees, but more than that, we need to save the people that are homeless. McDonald's, donate all your hamburgers to the homeless, that way, no, no.
The item, Mr. Dude, the item deals with trees. Stay on the item, please.
Are the trees homeless?
Mr. City Attorney, he's, he's taking me to a weird place.
Animals and trees are not homeless, it's only people. See?
Homelessness is not the issue.
That is the issue.
No, it's not.
You have a lot of homeless people.
Mr. City Attorney, help me out.
This extended discussion of irrelevancies is causing a disruption.
Okay, thank, thank you, that's your time, because you did not speak on the subject. Mr. Reyes, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, the Chinatown BID has been working with the Hong Kong Urban Council, and they are promoting the Hong Kong Orchid Flowers, a flower that is a national symbolism. It appears in the Hong Kong's coat of arms, its flag and its coin. The BID, working with delegates from China, uh, and the private sector, would like to promote, uh, these trees in Chinatown to enhance its destination as a tourist destination. And with your approval and support, colleagues, we can take the necessary steps. That's why I'm asking to take jurisdiction over the action of Public Works, which was this past Friday on the 1st of February, and I moved to veto the February 1st action by the Board of Commissioners to allow for these trees to be planted in Chinatown.
Thank you, Mr.
Is there a second to the motion?
Is there a second? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, no more speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just for clarification, Mr. Reyes's motion is to disapprove the action of, uh, the Board of Public Works.
Yes, to veto the February 1st.
So he's, you're requesting a yes vote, that we veto the previous action?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, can we, uh...
And just for clarification, sort of the language is the same as the language in the Charter, that is a vote to disapprove the action.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, I wanna reconsider item, uh, 12.
Item 10?
Item 10, which was the ordinance, because we now have 12 members present, so the first vote is on reconsideration on item 10. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we'll vote on the item itself. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item 3. Mr. Labange.
Let members and their field deputies be aware of this. Mr. Nagel is here for the City Attorney's Office. We re, uh, state law, uh, was rewritten, give us this opportunity to keep our, our neighborhoods clean and free of this challenge of street prostitution that sometimes take effect in the Western Avenue Corridor, in the, uh, Wilshire District, as well as some parts of Hollywood on Sunset and other places. So I wanted to thank Mr. Nagel and City Attorney's Office, and, uh, all to be aware that this is now an opportunity to, uh, use this with our efforts to keep our neighborhoods, uh, more vibrant as opposed to this challenge. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Labange, let me clarify, it was item 2, not item 3. Item 2.
2, yes.
Okay, Mr. Buscaino.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I, I too wanna acknowledge, uh, Mr. Labange and Mitch Englander, uh, chairing public safety to move this item forward. I just wish we had something like this when I was a senior lead officer, um, a, a great tool for, uh, the residents to use to identify those who are primarily illegal dumping and also, uh, you know, the prostitution along Figueroa Corridor, specifically in Watts, and, and an issue that, uh, is so near and dear to the quality of life of the city of Los Angeles. In, in Watts, we have a huge problem with illegal dumping in our alleys, and I know moving forward in this ordinance will help prevent that by having people come forward, identifying, uh, the license plate numbers, and, uh, holding the registered owner of these vehicles accountable for dumping in our city. So thank you, uh, Mr. Labange, for this item, and to my partner in Public Safety Committee, uh, Mitch Englander, for moving this forward.
Mr. Kerkorian.
I'll, I'll pass.
Okay. We'll move Mr. Kerkorian off the queue. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. More quick, please. Emergency clock.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, we wanna do item 3 now. This is item 3.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, it's, uh, with great pleasure that I'd like to inform you of the progress that has been taking place along the River Corridor. Uh, most folks think it's just about the water and the river and, and nature, which is very important, but there's many elements to the rehabilitation and the whole notion of how we bring this corridor to life. We just got a grant from the federal government, Housing Urban Development, 2.2 million, that will allow us to create models that will stimulate further opportunities so we can explore with advocates, stakeholders, using social media and internet, grassroots door-to-door efforts, to look at how we can promote healthcare, workforce development, the arts, business, real estate, and commercial ventures. So that's all already in place, the money is there, we're now organizing along the corridor. Moving forward on two new bridges in Atwater and in Taylor Yard, and there's one in construction now on Riverside Bridge. The Glendale River Walk has been recently completed, and I wanna thank the City of Glendale, and working the Glendale Narrow segment of the river. We got three new parks in design and construction near completion. Uh, this year, it'd be the Sunny Nook, um, Marsh, and one that happens to be called Ed P. Reyes Riverway. The other one is the, uh, issue with the Army Corps. Uh, we are working with them to finish their study. Uh, we're hoping that the alternative will be in place in the very near future. Uh, we are implementing the River Access Program, which is in the Glendale Narrows. Uh, this will happen on Memorial Day, Labor Day 2013, and we're looking at a pilot program of recreational access within the river. Uh, it'll highlight public safety, kayaking, and fishing, uh, which will require a state license. Uh, the proposal, working with, uh, MRCA, uh, to work with us in the designated park area with park rules and other conditions, uh, we're looking with, uh, we're working with increased resources from the, uh, Folar, Conservation Corps, and MRCA. Uh, all this is happening, and having touched on all the plans, specific plans, with the Casp and Boyle Heights up in the valley, so the whole corridor is being stimulated. It's, uh, very exciting, and I wanna make sure that my colleagues were aware of this progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino, you held, uh, item 19. Are we ready to take that up now?
We're still working on circulating the, uh, the amendment.
The amendment, okay, let's go to, uh, item 18. Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, John Walsh, and Mr. Dude. Good morning, Sean.
Yeah, good morning, Sean Murphy. Uh, I support this item, it's a good item, and it should be 10 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 successful requests per month, and for identification purposes only, anybody but Garcetti for mayor. He's not here, he's out running for mayor. Uh, I don't see Perry here either. Okay, this again is reward gate. Now the entire United States realizes what a sham rewards are. And let's take a look at, uh, the Dorner cases, the reason. Now, I was up here Friday and asked you some simple questions. How many rewards?
Mr. President, he's not talking about this reward offer.
All the rewards, which includes Cynthia Noltreras. I, I know she's a Mexican-American, and she's, and she, and she's dead. Now, I'm talking about her and this white man over here, I want you to Spanish, tells me it's off the subject. I'm talking about the reward for her. When was it issued? How many awards? I wanna break down of how many rewards are up right now that you're offering, how much money in the last five years, how many you've paid out, and how many are by race? And I think you'll find there's almost no white person. This is all rewards, and they never get the rewards. I would like you, and when I asked people here from the City, uh, City Clerk's Office, you know what they said? Go on the site and do it yourself. Mr. Buscaino, I'm asking you, as a cop who has arrested people, I want a report on every damn reward and what the status is. I'm supposed to go into there and do the job? And if it isn't, if you don't wanna do that, you're on the side of the murderers. HollywoodHighland.org, reward gate.
Okay. Juan Dalhouse Dude?
Well, I think as a reward, you should give every single citizen in this city a home. That would be the best reward you can give anybody, and you won't have to be looking for people, they'll be looking for you. Give us back our money in the way of housing. Would you like that for a reward? Everybody would like a reward like that.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this reward offer for this individual.
Denying crime by having everybody own a little something.
Sir, please focus on the reward on the item.
Right, right. It would be very rewarding for the people to have something so they don't go around...
You are now disrupting the meeting. You're not focused on the item on the agenda.
Okay, you're offering $100,000 for this guy's reward, right?
This is not the agenda item.
Okay, go look for Ben Laden.
Okay. Seen other cars? No one on the speaker queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. I understand there's still being worked done on the amendment for item 19, so let's move to public comment.
I think we'll go to 20.
19, there's still, well, let's do 20. Let's do 20 instead. Could you have cards on number 20, Sean?
Uh, yes, item 20. It, it's a, item 20 is a good, I'm against this one.
Thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and this is item 20. This is a public hearing concerning multifamily housing revenue bonds. Uh, I better mention, uh, the numbers, HazeltineandWien.org. If I don't, if I'm not totally specific, the, you'll be, I'll be heckled by you. Uh, the fact is, we've been going through this for many years. Because of the high rate of interest, the city has to pay on these housing revenue bonds, and because they're 30-year bonds often, the cost of building a unit of affordable housing is more expensive than when the private sector does it. It's more expensive than the private sector. But you know who gets rich? The banks, the middlemen, the bond sellers. They get rich here, and anyway, there's a simple, uh, answer to all this, and that is, if you want to slay the dragon, you don't have to touch him, just cut off his food supply. Their food supply is money. 1/2% city sales tax on March 5th. Vote no, no. 50 million, $212 million a year, no. Vote no on Prop A.
Juan Dalhouse Dude?
Uh, for, uh, 24 seconds, uh, for your information only, vote for Juan Dalhouse Dude Alcalá for, uh, City Council District 11. I'm running. I'm running.
Sir, please stick to the item on the agenda.
My main concern is housing for everyone, and this item is very much down the avenue that I would wish to follow if I was one of you. I would wish that everybody can have affordable housing, more than affordable.
Sir, again, please focus on the item.
Isn't it about affordable housing?
Specific to the bond?
Oh, specific to the bond, yeah. You spend way too much money and produce nothing. That is the problem. Okay? You spend way too much money and produce nothing for anybody.
Thank you. Marion Fogler?
Here we go again. We're talking about a budget deficit of $216 million, and you're bringing up CRA-type of projects. You're doing it again. I don't understand why you're putting in these bonds when they charge more interest and your people are complaining about the deficit. And you can't expect the voters to pass Proposition A when in fact you're putting something like this on here, TEFRA bonds. You know, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, you're spending here $12 million is outrageous. So, I don't get you. It's, it's, it's really, a really terrible thing that you're doing here to finance this kind of housing. So, voters, please don't vote for Prop A, because it'll also add on to your gas prices. Because after all, the gas is going up, so you don't need to pay more.
Coming up, sir. Just give us your name, and if you mind filling out a card. Appreciate it.
I'm John Smokey Brown. I'm one of the members of Grateful Meds. Been there years and years. I rolled all about 300 joints a day for the collective, and you shut us down. I guess it's because I can't.
He's not talking about item twenty. Sir, please stay focused on the item.
You made me homeless, guys. You made me homeless.
Regardless, he's not talking about this item. Okay. Thank you very much. You're disrupting the meeting now, sir. You are now disrupting the meeting. Please stay focused. You're disrupting the meeting, sir. No, sir. Okay. We do have one, councilman on the queue, Councilman Kerkorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to again provide clarification to the public about TEFRA bonds. This does not cost the city any money. The city is not investing $12 million in these projects. This is merely a pass-through that allows the developer of these projects to take advantage of this bonding authorization. It doesn't cost the city any money, so the public commenters are just incorrect about the operation of TEFRA.
Thank you for that clarification, councilmember. No one else on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to public comment. Juan Dalhous-Dude?
So, if these projects do not cost the city any money, who pays for these projects? The people. And the people are supposed to be the government, not City Council. City Council and City Hall are only the administration of the people's money. You are not the government. So, stop making ordinances that will drive people homeless, that will drive them insane, and will come over here telling you, "You made me homeless. You stole my business. You stole my car. You stole everything from us." Stop being thieves with a license. I am running for District 11, and if I win, I will join you, but I will refuse to be a thief with a license. I will be talking about how can we do better for people, not for corporations. All you are is about how can we collect money from people in a million different ways, and that is not the way we should be doing government. You are not the government. The people is the government. You're only the administration of the people's money. And in all these projects, eventually, the people are the ones that pay for everything. So don't say the city is not having to spend any money. The people are always having to spend their money on all your programs that go wrong. So, I'm not criticizing City Hall, I'm just letting you know there is a better to provide housing for everyone. Vote for Juan for District 11. I will implement with the help of everybody some changes.
Thank you very much. Phyllis Doherty, Phyllis Doherty, please come up. Coming up, Ms. Doherty.
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty. I'm here to speak to you about an item that was tucked into another ordinance and didn't get much discussion. We'll be coming back to you. It's Council File 110754S1. This was brought in by the mayor's office at the request of one organization to change the CUP process only for the purpose of establishing dog kennels in shopping malls and any business location, or even, as it's written, in a residential location throughout the city. It would favor only one group of people. You're going to be told that it's on behalf of pet store owners. It is not. I did a CPRA, and not one pet store owner is interested in taking large adult dogs and keeping them in small pet shops. I want you to know what the mayor's office said about you, even though two of the council offices, Councilman Coretts and Councilman Rosendahl, had deputies who spoke out that this cannot be circumvented. This is a CUP process for everyone. The mayor's office, Mr. Bickhart, wrote about the city council that years of experience tell me that if you just go ahead with this kind of solution we're proposing, there's a 99% likelihood that it would go through city council unnoticed, and that would be the end of that. It's only an issue if they turn it into it. This is an issue because it would destroy the business environment of this entire city. It must go to the Planning Commission. We cannot have dog kennels next door to dental offices and restaurants, no matter how noble it looks. The nonprofits do make money. They are in business also, and they need to follow the same procedure as any business. This has not been allowed for public health and safety reasons. It cannot be allowed. It will destroy the business environment of this entire city.
Thank you very much. Sean? Followed by John Walsh.
Yes, good morning. I want to talk about the election in two weeks. Vote for, please get out and vote. I gave a small contribution to one of the mayors, I'm not going to name them, for City Council Seven, Christie Clark, for City, for City Council Nine, Anna, City Council Five, Mark Hurd. I'd like these people to become council members. They're better qualified for the job.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our website and see the next pope, Antonio Villarosa, or see our voter guide. Incidentally, his, his name when he becomes pope will be Roger the First after our cardinal. Okay. Last Friday at 9:00 PM at 6,900 Hollywood Boulevard, early evening, a woman was raped on the Hollywood Boulevard Walk of Fame. Go look it up in Crime Mapping LA. Go look it up. The third rape in Hollywood within the last 12 days. Do you give a damn? Does Buscaino give a damn? Does Zine give a damn? No, well then you talk to me about this rape, because I want to know.
But he's addressed the full council.
The rapes are up. What?
Addressed the full council.
The rapes are up in the city by 5.8%. We have a rape spree, but the reason they're not telling you about the rape is it's never a white woman. You remember, and I'm talking all to the minorities out there, do you remember the white woman who was raped in the West Side on Melrose? Well, in a white neighborhood? Big story! It's news when a white woman is raped, but when a black or Hispanic woman is raped, you know what they say? She had it coming to her. She was walking Hollywood in the middle of the morning. She was provocatively, that's what they say! And I'm telling you, this happened at 9:00 PM to a woman. I want to know the details. I want to know. But they don't want to do it because you have Oscars. The Oscar cast is coming up, so they're pretending. They're holding us hostage. Rapes are out of control in this city, and not one of you give a damn. Officer Buscaino, you've seen women be raped. Why do you care now? Because Garcetti doesn't want you to talk about it.
Mr. Walsh, please address the full council.
Hollywood Highland Dardar. You're going to arrest me for talking?
Thank you.
I'm talking to Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, sir. Marion Fogler? You're now disrupting the meeting, sir. Marion Fogler?
How do you men get into this world? Through women, so we should get the rapists. And you know what we need to do is take the thing off. Anyway, first of all, I've been gone, and my dad, the Rabbi Kanter Morris Firestone, died December 30th. He was, he served in the US Navy, was a Merchant Marine, and he was my counselor and mentor. He taught me to be happy and enjoy life to its fullest, because you never know what's going to happen tomorrow, what will bring. May, okay? He sang "Oh, What a Beautiful Morning" from Oklahoma. I'd like to sing a little excerpt of it. "Oh, what a beautiful morning! Oh, what a beautiful day! I got a wonderful feeling."
You're now disrupting the meeting, ma'am.
Everything's going my way. Maybe he, he sang everywhere he went. He was a happy-go-along guy. Life was, living was life for him. He enjoyed gambling, and life was the essence of his existence, because there was no purpose otherwise. My dad, the Rabbi Kanter Morris Firestone, shared with everybody. Made his home in Van Nuys in 1960 and returned to Nevada in 19, he went to Nevada in 1986 to bring Jews together, and with enthusiasm and spirituality, he wanted to bring more Jewish community. He'll be always remembered as my dad, Rabbi Morris Firestone, the guy who served in the US Navy and Merchant Marine, Merchant Marine First. He taught, he fought hard for life and America, and I, I thank God for giving him, and now he took him away from me, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donna Promin?
Mr. Rosendahl, she still wants the adjournment. Okay, yeah, as I said, vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor. Anyway, LACity.org was changed, and it's very confusing. I spent an hour and a half looking for the agendas on the weekend and only saw it last week, so I don't like the new changes on the agenda. Anyway, you haven't, presentations to McDonald's yet. Councilwoman Jan Perry put a moratorium on the fast-view restaurants, so I find that very strange to suddenly talk about how healthy they are. I myself go to McDonald's for a place to see friends. And Councilman Rosendahl, you look great. We read, we need to vote no on A. It will hurt businesses, raise the gas prices, make it hard for the public on a limited budget, and it's going to be hard on the grocery stores, and it's certainly not going to be great on these, you want bringing business jobs? Well, it's certainly not going to do that with Prop A. So vote no on Prop A. I admit, we have good choices for mayor. Wendy Gruel, who is a good comptroller, Jan Perry, one of the strongest women politicians, who's a straight shooter, and of course Eric Garcetti, who's proved he can be a mayor. And if you want a mayor that's really communicates with the people, really listens, I believe Eric Garcetti should be the choice, because he believes the valley should speak, speak video conference, which I still believe needs to be done. We need to bring the video conferencing back, so that people, I believe we can find a lot more people that will come to, from the neighborhood councils that will come and speak at the valley. So, the biggest things to remember is vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor, because I've spoke to him, and he really cares. When he speaks to people, he really listens to what they have to say. So, vote no on A and vote for Eric Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you. John Smokey Brown?
Oh, guys, I wish you wouldn't start this talk. Oh, there it went. You made me homeless. You're close Grateful Meds. I don't know how you got a name, maybe you got it off my shirt, or maybe we just paid taxes longer. What the hell are we paying taxes for medicine for? That's ridiculous. But first, I want to tell you, while I was homeless, I kicked it at all of your different precincts. I've been to Eastside Projects, I've been to Inglewood and the Hood, I've been all over this town, and I realized that half the damn town is homeless, and it's your fault. You got BID Patrol on Hollywood Boulevard. Whoever's paying for that, I'd love to have your address and phone number and, and give it to the people who get like tickets or arrested for pissing on the street, poor little girl homeless, pissing on the street, impound her cat or her dog. Look, guys, put some porta-potties on the street, or make the businesses have a place for them to pee. Listen, and, and you're going to turn this off, and then all these fucking goons that are, that are just watchdogs for police are going to come up here and try to stop me? Hey, listen, all of my friends are armed and dangerous. Narcos, Serenios, Crips, Bloods, and pretty soon they're going to start coming with me here, and I'm gonna close this town down and open it back up myself if I have to. My John Brown forefather, they hung him because he was trying to give the niggers arms and guns.
Please watch your language, sir. You're now disrupting the meeting.
But you know what? My niggers have guns.
Sir, you're now disrupting the meeting.
And, and, and there's going to be a revolution. It says right there in the Constitution. It's really okay to have a revolution when the leader that you choose just don't.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Ted Hayes?
Say goodbye!
You're disrupting the meeting, sir. Please leave, please have them removed. He's been disrupting the meeting. Mr. Reyes?
The Brown Act points out that any member that attends a meeting where any aspect of the Brown Act is violated are guilty of a misdemeanor. Here's your misdemeanor. On your rules, you indicate that any member of the public wishing to speak to an item, well, public comment is not an item on the agenda, and neither is presentation an item on the agenda. But you can't speak, from what I'm told by your police officers, who don't really run this meeting, you do, that you can't speak on public, on, on presentation, because it's not an item on the agenda. Well, if you look on page 14, you'll find that public testimony, as you call it, is not an item on the agenda. What does that lead the public to believe once they read your rules and see that public testimony is not an item? Well, they can't speak on it. That's the logical conclusion. Well, the actual conclusion is you do not wish the public to participate. When you have McDonald's in here, a special interest who may give any one of you huge contributions, taking up all the time they took to serve their diet, that's because you don't want us to challenge you on that aspect of it. So, the Brown Act says that you can speak on items on the agenda. So the Brown Act says that you can speak on items on the agenda, so you try to sidestep that, get around it by not making public testimony, which is actually comment. Now, the way you understand testimony and comment, look at the Attorney General's opinions on this subject. The Attorney General points out testimony takes place on items on the agenda. Public comment is not testimony. It is merely comment. But the fact is, ladies and gentlemen, you must put an agenda item on public comment as well as an agenda item on presentations.
Thank you very much.
I guess we're going to save the best for last. I haven't been down here in a while, but I know a lot of things is, number one, to all my fans out there who listened to us about five or six years ago, vote no on Proposition A. LAPD needs to train the officers that they have. The supervisor says it's right. It's not in the budget. Wendy Gruel, you got the best campaign out there, but you got the wrong platform when it comes to Proposition A. Change your platform, get into the black churches. Number two, Eric Garcetti, you're a good man, but your commercials are kind of weak. And when I say that, they're weak. You need to beef up your commercials, man. Right now, Wendy Gruel, you got a message. You're wrong about Proposition A. Vote no on Proposition A, because we need to train the officers that we have in there to be transparent. That was what was wrong with the Dorton thing. He told on the people that was in doing the violations, and when he told on them, he got reprimanded and fired. A training officer cannot handcuff you and then beat you up. Chris Dorton, what you did was wrong. Your actions were right. What you did was wrong. You don't have to kill anybody. But like I said, vote no on Proposition A. There is police corruption. There is discrimination in the police department. Chief Beck, I need to talk to you. It's real. It's real, and it's real. Chief Beck, listen to what I'm saying, and to all of, all the city council, vote no on Proposition A. Train the people that you got and rely on the sources. My name is Michael Hunt. I'm a triple platinum Nine Circuit winner, and I'm the best that America has offered. Thank you.
Okay, seen the other public comment cards? Public comment is now closed. Councilor Buscaino on item 19?
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, the community of Wilmington on this item, item number 19 before you. The community of Wilmington is located just north of the Port of Los Angeles, and for years, residents have endured the negative consequences of heavy industrial operations in and around the port. In recent years, the city and port have made great strides in working with the community to mitigate these consequences by enhancing forward-thinking policy, like the Clean Truck Program, as well as building the Wilmington Waterfront Park, which creates a buffer between the port and the adjacent residential neighborhood. In addition, residents have long advocated for the separation of heavy industrial uses from residential zones. Unfortunately, on February 5, 2013, the Harbor Area Planning Commission, by a 2-2 vote, upheld the decision by the zoning administrator, which would allow for the operation of a truck and container storage facility at 920 Eubank Avenue on a parcel-zoned QRD3 residential. The location of this facility is such close proximity to homes that will create increased truck traffic, noise, and pollution for residents. And far too often, the Wilmington community has suffered enough. The action of the zoning administrator and the area planning commission's decision to uphold it was a step in the wrong direction and is contrary to the efforts of the city and the port to improve the quality of life for those who live around this vital asset to trade and commerce. So colleagues, what we've done here before you, we have a substitute motion, per the advice of the city attorney, that I ask for your I-vote. And as we look closer at this case, we need to do what's right and represent the best interests of our Wilmington community. And upon approval of this substitute motion on item number 19, I ask that we continue this until this Friday, February 22nd. Thank you.
Okay, so that is the action before us.
So, Mr. President, just for clarification, council's first vote should be on whether to substitute the motion for the previous motion.
Okay, so that's the first vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes. And now, Mr. President, without objection, if you like, you can continue the item to February 22nd.
We will do that. We will continue to Friday, February 22nd. Do we have a vote count on that, or, okay, we can continue. All right, without objection. Okay. So, Michael, what's before us?
Mr. President, that's council two motions for post and referral.
Post and refer?
That clears the desk.
Members of the announcements? Adjourning motions? Councilor LeBarnes, please, everybody stand. Thank you. Councilor LeBarnes?
Members, we all heard the news of Dr. Jerry Buss passing, 80 years old. Born in Wyoming, came to Los Angeles, where went to USC in '24, got a PhD in chemistry, got involved with real estate, and in that fortune of real estate, what turned out to be his true love of life after his family was the Los Angeles Lakers. We all know what a great title town this was with the Lakers from Showtime throughout. The change of the game, the excitement of the game, that has now brought the game worldwide. 80 years old is just about too young in the battle with cancer, but he was sorely missed. He survived by his six children, who he much loved, and he loved the city, and he loved Lakers, and he loved the fans, and he loved the people, and he certainly set the mark up very high as an owner. I ask we all adjourn in the memory of Jerry, of very special Dr. Buss.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? Councilor Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. We all know Marion Fogler here, and she's been an incredible community activist involved in the issues of the day. Her father passed away. Colleagues, today, we adjourn in the honor of Rabbi Morris Firestone, one of the longest-serving clergymen in the areas of southern Nevada, western Arizona, and southeastern California. If the camera can go on Marion, you will see her right there now, sitting in the front row. He passed away on Sunday, December 30th, at the age of 92, after undergoing multiple hospitalizations during the course of the past year. Morris Firestone was born September 26, 1920, to Eastern European immigrants in Pittsfield, New Hampshire. He was the oldest of five sons, raised on a small family farm. When Morris was 15, his father died, and the farm was sold. The family moved to Manchester, where Morris graduated from high school. After graduating, he joined the Merchant Marines and acquired a lifelong taste for cigars when he sailed trade routes between Miami and Havana. At the start of World War II, Firestone enlisted in the Navy and was assigned to the USS Colorado. When the large battleship was sunk in the Pacific, he survived the attack and redeployed to Pearl Harbor. He was discharged with the rank of Machinist Mate First Class. A talented singer, as we heard Marion sing a little bit ago, Firestone received an undergraduate degree in music from Columbia University and appeared on a Broadway in A Flag Is Born in 1946, play promoting the creation of a Jewish state in what is now Israel. After graduating college, Firestone accepted a job as an electrician for the Los Angeles County, and was a part-time cantor at a number of congregations in the San Fernando Valley. He met his future wife, Marcella, while seeking out a new pianist to accompany him. They were married for 57 years. Upon his retirement in 1986, Firestone completed rabbinical studies while, and became ordained. He mainly conducted services for congregations in Langdon and in Las Vegas. Rabbi Firestone is survived by four children, Diane, Samuel, Rebecca, and Marion, and granddaughters Anne and brothers Paul and Jack. He was buried with military honors on January 2 in Las Vegas at King David Cemetery. A memorial in celebration of life was held Thursday, January 3, at the American Legion Post 60 in Langdon, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. Councilor Parks?
I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Anthony Tony Pachat, who passed away on February 11, 2013, at the age of 65. Tony was the first African-American pilot in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. During his 33-year tenure, 20 of them were spent in Aero Bureau. He managed to walk away after harrowing midair collision and survived several attempts by gunmen to shoot him out of the sky. He loved fast cars and even faster aircraft. More than that, LA County Sheriff's helicopter pilot loved his job of patrolling more than 4,000 square miles on his beat. Along the way, he saved countless lives by plucking lost hikers off rocky ledges and out of narrow canyons, navigating his Eurocopter through webs of power lines to pull children from rain-swollen storm channels. One of those rescues involved two boys being washed down Big Dalton Creek near West Covina in 2001, which earned he and his partner the Rescue of the Year Award from an International Helicopter Pilot Association. He was born in 1948 in Port of Spain, Trinidad. He lived in LA County most of his life, and was working as a water company salesman in 1970 when he decided to join law enforcement. After joining the Sheriff's Department in '75, he worked as a jailer, a patrol deputy at Firestone, and a detective. Because he had a pilot's license, he applied for the Aero Bureau. Flying over east LA in 1989 with the police chief of Bangkok, Thailand, sitting in his copter's backseat, his aircraft was struck by gunfire. He took two rounds in the fuel cell. He began to smell fuel leaking out. At first, he thought he had left the fuel cap off. Two bullets were found later in the fuel tank when he made an emergency landing at MLK Drew Medical Center. This incident led to the department using self-sealing tanks on his helicopters. His most frightening moment came when the Compton police helicopter collided with his at the scene of a 1990 gang fight near Florence and Central. He said he saw shadows. He couldn't tell what it was, but he knew something was there. He pushed to the right, and there was a tremendous boom. Suddenly, he went straight down. He's able to land safely in a schoolyard. The Compton helicopter sat down in a church parking lot. Both crews escaped injury. It was later learned that the other pilot did not hear Tony's position, because he had turned his radio down to listen to the Compton police frequency. Tony is survived by his parents Carlton and Cynthia, his son Gavin, two grandsons, and a host of family members. His funeral service will be held at 10:00 AM on Saturday, February 23, at City of Refuge Church, located at 14527 South San Pedro in Gardena.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Zine?
For the San Bernardino County Deputy Sheriff, Jeremiah McKay, passed away February 12th, shot and killed during a shootout in San Bernardino County. He was 35 years old. Joined the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department July 1998, served for 15 years. He worked in the jails, as a detective at the department's Big Bear Station, and most recently, as a deputy in the department's-- He also serves as a train officer of the department. He grew up in the area, decided to follow his father in the public service. Described as a well-loved family man, who had a great sense of humor, married to Lynette, and had a seven-year-old stepdaughter and a four-month-old son. Family, friends, and coworkers described the deputy as having a big personality, a big heart, and a big, loud laugh. He will be missed by his family, friends, and the community. Services will be on Wednesday, February 20, 5 to 8, at Mount View Mortuary and Cemetery. The memorial service will be held on Thursday, February 21, at 11:00 AM at the San Miguel Amphitheater, formerly Glenn Helen Pavilion in San Bernardino. He's survived by his wife, a seven-year-old stepdaughter, and his four-month-old son, Jeremiah McKay. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other adjourning motions? Councilor?
Actually, I just wanted to add to what was said about Jerry Buss. As, just as a large sports fan, my whole life, and watching his impact, you have to remember, the NBA actually was not guaranteed success at around the time that he took over. And I really believe what guaranteed its success and made it what it is today was his innovations and what he did as an owner. Everything from Showtime to Laker Girls to Laker teams that won championships and waves, I believe, made it what it is today. And really, I think we're just lucky that all of us, especially LA sports fans, that we were all along for the ride. And for those of us who are fans of the NBA and fans of sports, Jerry Buss is considered by many to be the best owner of a professional sports team in the history of American professional sports, and we should just be glad that we had the opportunity to enjoy that and enjoy his life and recognize him for all of his accomplishments.